I'd like to call this joint meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order and I'll turn it over to the Bylaw Review Committee to call their meeting to order.
Call the Bylaw Review Committee meeting to order.
Second.
Okay, and the, uh, you're not, you don't? Okay, the Finance Committee is here to observe and to take notes. They do not have a quorum this evening. This is a meeting being held in public, but it is not a public hearing and so questions and answers will be restricted to those who are part of the meeting itself. And we have here not only the three committees, but we have various department heads and so forth who are here to answer your questions. And having said that, I'm, to the Chair of the Finance, to the Bylaw Committee, Mark Moss.
Good evening, everyone. Just have a short statement and then we'll get started maybe with some questions from the other committee members and board members. On behalf of the Bylaw Review Committee, I'd like to explain some of the scope of the project. We held our first meeting on August 29th, 2011, so that was three-plus years ago. This is the 16th Bylaw Review Committee meeting and we've held two public informational hearings. Some of the people who participated in this bylaw project are the town manager, chief financial officer, town clerk, town planner, Board of Selectmen, police chief, fire chief, Department of Public Works director, the Department of Public, Department of Development and Inspection Services acting director, the town moderator, the Finance Committee, the departments, Department staff members, information technology, IT, and town council. Each of these people and their staff has brought their expertise and their experience to the bylaw process. These bylaws have also had a thorough legal review. As a part of the development and organizational processes, we've incorporated stormwater management and attachment titled traffic rules and regulations. POCS rules and regulations are now incorporated into the bylaw. These bylaws reflect the charter changes, municipal restructuring, and Mass General Law. A fee schedule and fine schedule has been created to allow the Board of Selectmen to make changes to fees and fines annually or as needed, eliminating the need to go through town meeting. The bylaws are comprehensive and should assist the respective departments and divisions and their employees to be able to do their jobs. The Bylaw Review Committee respectfully requests that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen vote this evening or vote to support the approved draft version of the bylaws being presented to the Auburn Town Meeting for the special Town Meeting in March. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions, statements? Anything?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, okay. First of all, your committee has taken on a phenomenal job. It's been incredible. I've had a chance to read through it. It's about as detailed as I've ever seen any set of bylaws for anything. You've pretty much covered just about everything in the book and I just wanted to say thank you for all your time and helping the town to go forward because now that we have a set of bylaws, written rules, we move forward and it's printed out for us so there should be no discussion and no question about where we're going and actually where we've been because we've come a long way just because of your help. And I want to say thank you. Thank you.
Are there, is there any department head that wants to say anything about anything concerning these? No? Yes, Dan?
Yes, I do have one question. Under publication, and when you first started to meet, one of the questions I had on publication was certified copies shall be available. And we're talking about section 106 under publication and it's the first paragraph and it says certified copies shall be available on request and loosely print for a fee as determined by the Board of Selectmen. I think it's great we have certified copies and a non-certified copy in paragraph two says a non-certified copy of the official Town of Auburn bylaws will be posted regularly, updated, and available. The certified copy should be a current, accurate copy of any of the bylaws and if those are to be published and to be distributed, should there be some sort of a record of who has them so that there is no question of interpretation of my copy says, your copy says? Should they be some way of controlling that?
I think a simple answer, Mr. Holstrom, I'd have to think about that some more, but I know the town clerk would have the certified copy.
Okay.
The certified copy so that if somebody needed a copy or wanted a copy, they could go to the town clerk and get that certified copy in hand from them.
Okay, and it would be dated and whatever revisions would be made, there would be a record of the revisions being made?
Yes.
Because interpretation, as you well know, is, you know, can be a real problem and I want to just be sure that we have a certified copy someplace and if there is going to be a distribution list, then maybe, you know, let those people that have certified copies just make aware that this is what they are. But if the certified copy is going to be with the town clerk, then that's the one that we should ultimately go forward to and people should understand that if there is any questions.
Sure. It may also be that the certified copy with technology today that we're able to watermark the pages as the most current document so that it's quite clear because with the PDF files, you can do those type of things. So we could research that further to ensure that whatever page somebody was working off was the most current model.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, another place it strikes me, what about the public library? I don't know whether it would be certified, but a copy of the bylaws in the public library would probably be a good idea and I suppose if it's there, it should be certified. Are there any other questions, thoughts? Yes, Dan?
Just, just a couple of questions. 15, under Police Department, oh two, section one, I guess?
Cover page, sir.
You may. Ninety.
Ninety. That's 1502, number one on page 90.
In the existing Charter, it, the language states that the Board of Selectmen may amend the rules. In the new Charter, it states as recommended by the police chief. I was just wondering why the change in language and does that prevent the Board of Selectmen, whoever they may be, from making changes on its own, initiating change?
Mr. Henigan, would you like to field that one?
In answer to Mr. Cappenter's question, the language was put in as recommended by the police chief. I presume it doesn't take away from the Board of Selectmen's authority to establish or amend the traffic rules and all, but it's obviously suggesting, I think, that those, no one, not just anybody's going to be able to make those. There's going to have to be somebody who's going to have to make a recommendation and the best person to make that recommendation, I believe, was, what the committee felt was the, the police chief. So it's not, it's not necessarily dissipating Board of Selectmen's authority to amend. It's really controlling what actions they take to amend and that would be based on that recommendation of the police chief. That's at least how I interpreted it.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Yes, even in English, that's true.
As a follow-up, which is probably moot, but again, penalties and violations as recommended by the police chief, that's 1502 three on page 90.
Excuse me, what, which number, please, Dan?
I'm sorry, it's section three.
Section three, page 90.
So it's, it's just two down.
Again, I can't speak for the committee as to their thinking on it, but it would, I would imagine that the idea here was that it, again, be controlled by someone who's making a recommendation to the board so that there's some control over those. The idea here, though, is also that at the end of this, if you look at, if I could just turn your attention to, back to page two, and so everybody's clear on this, section 103 speaks about the setting of a fee schedule and a fine schedule. And in there, it talks about the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis establishing fees and/or fines for whatever various portions of this bylaw come into play. So my thinking of that is that that was put in because somebody was going to be making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. All it is at that point in time, if the police chief was to recommend that a fee, a fine be $100 and the Board of Selectmen felt that it should be $200, there certainly wouldn't be anything preventing the Board of Selectmen from establishing that different from the recommendation.
Julie, did you?
I did, through the chair, if I may. I just want to make a note for those who may not be aware of it, if there are any new members. The Bylaw Review Committee was established in August of 2011 and I believe since that time, the committee has had nearly 20 public meetings. Of late, they had two public hearings as opposed to public meetings. There were two advertised public hearings. One was on, they, both original dates were snowed out. It was rather incredible that we had snowstorms on both of them. One was held on January 29th and one was held on February 3rd. So those are the two public hearings. The original draft document that had been worked on for a couple of years over a three-year period was posted to the website and distributed to the members. That one was originally dated, to your point about following this process, not going forward, but that one was originally dated December 15th, 2014. The most current one that everyone should be looking at, and I just want to make sure we note this, is dated February 20th, 2015. The reason for the change, and there are mostly moderate changes in here from December to February, were based upon the public hearings that the Bylaw Review Committee brought, brought forward and additional review by department heads, town council, and the committee. And those changes were then made and incorporated into this document. So the document you have in front of you is a result of the most recent public hearing process and additional review. I also want to note that, I was going to say this morning, but it clearly went into afternoon.
It did.
We began this morning around nine o'clock and around 2:30, we finished. For any of the revisions that were made as a result of the public hearings from the December 14th document to the February 20th document, this morning, we met with the appropriate department heads who had particular bylaws that had changed since that document. We met with the department heads, the town moderator, and town council and went through every single revision that had been made since the December draft and made sure that the language that was in the new revised ones was consistent with the rest of the document, which is, you know, some 180 pages. And by consistent, I mean definitions are set up the right way, language is the same way. His or her, the fire chief versus the chief, or the police chief versus the chief of police, all the language has to be consistent. So you will see that in this document, the language for every single bylaw is consistent. That was done this afternoon, again. So what you have in front of you will not show the final changes that we made, which are insignificant, does not change the intent nor the, nor the language significantly of anything that you have before you tonight. It strictly was based on language, grammar, and in some cases, taking a section of one bylaw instead of saying upon vote of the Board of Selectmen at the end of it, we may have put it at the beginning, upon the Board, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, put it at the beginning. Nothing substantial. So there will be another version of this that will be coming out, that will go to town meeting members. That version will be done by Tuesday, next Tuesday. We're waiting to do that until tonight in case there were any additional questions or any additional concerns that we could incorporate. Town Council, Henigan, is the keeper of all the changes. So to Mr. Holstrom's point, there can be no confusion as to what document we're looking at. There is one official holder of these revisions and that is town council. All changes are being done by his office, no other office. So goes through one person, one computer, one final document. So after this evening, any additional changes will be incorporated by town council and that final document that will be ready on Tuesday will be the one that's mailed to the town meeting members the following Tuesday. So it has to go to the printer next, by the end of the day, Tuesday, and it'll be ready to pick up the following Monday morning, I think the ninth, and then on the 10th, it will be mailed to town meeting members. So I just want to make sure everyone is clear of what you have before you tonight. There'll be one additional version with modest changes that were made from a language and grammar standpoint today.
Are there any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
I want to go back to, to follow up on Mr. Cappenter's question. On page 90, 1502 enforcement to the chairman, do you know, if you happen to know, what percentage of those penalties are set by state statute anyway for police, you know, traffic violations and?
The traffic rules and orders, many of them that are actually in that booklet mirror chapter 90 and Massachusetts CMIs. So they're actually written almost verbatim, word for word, but they actually apply to secondary roads instead of state roads like the Mass, like the CMIs do. So the fines are set and I would assume, I would assume the easiest way to handle that would be to mirror the Mass General Law and CMIs with the same fine assessment.
So if they're set anyway, the Board of Selectmen wouldn't have discretion on setting those?
Well, these are bylaws and these are secondary laws and yes, you will have the authority to set those fees and fines. You could, I, I would recommend that you match them, but you could make them higher, up to $300, or you could make them less. It would be actually discretionary.
Okay, thanks. And I just also wanted to comment that I attended one of the public hearings and had raised an issue regarding a definition and I see that that was added to the, the new updated bylaw, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes, Julie?
Related to the fees, I want to make a mention also that you do not have in front of you a proposed schedule of fees and fines yet. That would be worked on under, again, under the recommendation of the department heads to the Board of Selectmen for those fees and fines that the Board of Selectmen would be authorized to approve. Mass General Law obviously does trump, so if there are any fees or fines that are established in our bylaws that Mass General Law establishes, then those would be the fees and fines that the Board would have to follow along. We will be preparing that schedule of fees and fines recommendation to the Board following the Town Meeting. At that point, the Board would have to take a look at what the recommendations are from all the department heads for those bylaws that specifically relate to their departments and their purview.
Yes, and in fact, we did discuss this this morning. At the Town Meeting on March 24th, we will not, we're not going to entertain a discussion on the fee schedule because it hasn't been set. And I would tell anybody who wants to talk about fees to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting where the fees will be set, where they can discuss them or do whatever, okay? Dan, did you?
Yeah, I have, I have several, so I just, the next one I had was, I believe it's on page 94, 1515, and it's actually section one. And it was more a question than anything else because the language is a little different from the existing bylaw, but it mentions a permit either issued by the Board of Selectmen or by the DPW and I just wanted to know the, the genesis of that.
Okay, excuse me, this is 1515, number one, on page 94. No person shall place erecta cards to be placed, that one there?
Yes.
Okay. 1515, number one, Mark.
The, it's my recollection that that's actually a carryover from our old bylaws. That one, I'm pretty sure came with us. Other than that, I'm not quite sure what it actually necessarily pertains to. Perhaps Bill Coyle has some?
Thank you, I'll do my best to come up with rational maybe why that's there. I would suspect that it's here because not all signs or, in this case, fixtures or structures that someone may be requesting would be relative strictly to DPW. It may be something that a, a private business may want to erect, so it may be that they want some discretion for the Board of Selectmen to weigh into whether or not that should be permitted. So it wouldn't necessarily strictly be traffic control reasons.
It just seemed confusing to me. If somebody was reading it, where would they go? I would hope that they'd go to the DPW because it's probably a lot easier than going to the Board of Selectmen, but it also raised a question of mine as to who sets the fee and, and it is a carryover. I know it's a carryover, I just wanted to, I don't know if there's a way that we could choose one or the other or make it clearer.
In other words, eliminate the Board of Selectmen and allow it as a discretion of the DPW or?
One or the other. And it may not be possible, I'm just, to me, it would be confusing.
If it were one or the other, my, my recommendation would be DPW just because majority of the signs or anything that's going to be placed within the right of way would be probably more of importance to, to the DPW.
I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm just, it was something that was confusing.
I've read it a couple of times here and I think it's more prohibitive in its language that it's really actually there more to prevent somebody from placing something inappropriately on a sidewalk or in a street that might hinder public safety, hinder people from walking. So I think it's, the way it's written, it's more prohibitive rather than, but there is, it has those, the Board of Selectmen and the DPW as a caveat that allows you to go around it in certain circumstances.
Again, going back to whether or not this was put in here originally for a private business, whether, if they wanted to have a sandwich board type of signs installed, I think it may be that's why that was put in place, but again, I don't think it's absolutely necessary that they have to go before the Board of Selectmen. And it may be easier to simplify it to Department of Public Works, but again, this is open for discussion and that's why we're here tonight.
I just bring it up because, like I said, it was confusing to me and it is a carryover, so if there was a way to clarify it so that, you know, it's.
Well, the confusion may be caused by the fact it's a comma in the wrong place and a comma that isn't there that I will give to Bob afterward.
We missed one, I can't believe we missed one. Can't believe that. Possibly what we may want to do is just take a look at this and revisit it and see if there's any other reason that we can think of why it may be there and then make a determination on which way we should proceed with it prior to the public, to the Town Meeting.
Yeah.
It's a good point. I think it does, it probably does confuse people on who do I go to, so I think it's something we should revisit.
I know in the existing bylaw, in traffic rules, it also says that it, in certain instances, the DPW would need to be consulted, which, I mean, considering we didn't have one, it's interesting that that was language in the original bylaw, but, so I don't know if there's, there were some Mass General Law sections mentioned in the existing bylaw which might give some guidance, I don't know, but I just happened to come across that, so. The next item I had was 1525 on page 101, special police officers. And it's more of a budget question than it is anything else in the existing bylaw. It states that they may be appointed, but they shall serve without pay. So I was wondering if that had changed, if, if we were going to compensate special police officers because it seemed like the existing language had a restriction on number of locations they could be assigned by the police chief. I didn't know if we had any currently, what their job duties would be, any limits on the number of offices that the police chief could name and whatever qualifications they may have.
We have one special police officer right now and typically their assignment is traffic details and they're paid by private details, so they're not paid on the municipal budget in that sense.
Okay. And that would continue? That would be the process?
Yes. I'm sure it would be a limited number.
Okay.
Anything else?
I, I have several more. Under 1526, section 20, which should be, something told me to put the page numbers down and I should have listened to my inner voice, but I didn't. It's under appeals, so it would be?
109.
109, thank you.
Page 109.
And it's 20A, it's, it's the only thing.
20A 109.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just a question, because the existing bylaw mentions a badge, an identifying badge being issued by the police chief and it has to be worn on an outer garment and that, that language seems to have been omitted. I didn't know if there was a specific reason for that.
Was, was the badge from the original bylaws?
It was, it.
This, this permit to solicit is a complete rewrite of those soliciting and canvassing bylaws. So I, I think we started from scratch because the other ones are so far outdated.
Okay. Just a general question, will the new ID have a photo? I noticed that the chief was asking for head shots, head shoulder shots. Would the new ID be laminate? What kind of? My concern was if someone has to ask to see the badge, which is in the new bylaw versus it being here, I just thought it might be clearer or better for somebody to be able to identify what the badge looked like so that they, before they opened the door, so that they wouldn't have to open the door and say.
I think that part of the process will be developed after the bylaws go through by the department.
Okay.
All right, Kevin, I'll see, had a?
Hopefully, a quick question for you, Mark. This is on page six, the item number 3.02, appointed boards. Now, I don't know if this was a rewrite or not. All appointed boards shall conduct regular meetings and shall reorganize at the first meeting of such board of each fiscal year. I know our committee, we normally need to meet in July more for housekeeping, clearing up accounts, et cetera, et cetera. We are typically barely having a quorum just because it's vacation time and I've chosen to delay setting, basically choosing a chair and vice chair till I have my full committee in place and attending, even if we do have a quorum on that. To me, I think it's just more representative. I don't know if this language has always been in place and the Finance Committee should be fined severely for our wrongdoing on this, but I'd be looking for a little bit more relaxation in this.
Okay.
Just given the intent of trying to make sure that when we do vote for chairman, vice chairman, and I'm not too sure how other boards work, that they have full representation if they so choose to instead of just a quorum to make that choice.
Could I suggest, Bob, what if we started it with normally, normal, normally all appointed boards shall conduct regular meetings and shall reorganize at the first meeting of such board of each fiscal year?
Or I think we could say all applicant, all appointed boards shall conduct regular meetings and shall reorganize at the first opportunity of such board in each fiscal year.
Okay, some, something, it can be fixed.
And I'm not looking for other boards to follow the way we do it. If a quorum works for other appointed boards, that's fine, it's just the way we like to operate.
This has to work for you and that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, I will follow it if we can't change this language, just I would prefer to have my full board basically present when we, when we make that decision.
Okay. I think after this meeting, we can both speak with the town council and.
Sure. I think what Bob will take care of.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that.
Big room.
Yeah. Dan?
Back to me. Still on 1526, but item 18, which is on page 108, lawf allow us to solicit. I was just concerned, it says 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I don't know who might be doing this, but it seems, especially this time of year, eight o'clock seems fairly late. I didn't know if there was.
I didn't know if there was a statutory requirement, or if we could have some thought on changing, changing those hours to more...
We just had a discussion relative to that within the last week. I believe we had it from 10:00 to 6:00 because we were trying to restrict it, and we were advised by council that restricting it may prevent someone their civil right to go out and solicit. So we felt that, after discussing it, that 8 o'clock is some, is a reasonable time somewhere in there. Certainly, we're open to suggestion, but we have, we can't be more restrictive than that. The law is confining us.
Okay.
Because if it was up to me, they wouldn't do it at all.
Shutting off the sunset hours is probably a red flag of some potential problem, so it doesn't have to be 8:00 PM. It could be earlier, but it's what it is right now.
It's one till they can't get to the front door anyway. Dan, did you have anything else?
Alas, I do. Let me just find the page so that makes it easier for everybody. It's 1601-11, which is on page 112. And it's 9A. You know, it's actually 11A. I'm sorry.
11A.
Appeal to the town hearing.
Appeal to the town hearing, Officer?
Yes. There was, there was a point where the old draft had something to do with a parking violations person, so that is a moot point because that seems to have been omitted from this latest version. But anyways, it mentions that if a fee that an administrator, either the police chief or the fire chief, would be assigning a fee, which actually is 9, not 11, so I apologize. Which is on page 111.
Oh, okay, 111. Page 111.
Yes.
9, false alarm, fine.
Yes.
Okay. A or B?
It would be A.
Okay.
And my, just for clarification for me, the Board of Selectmen will be setting that fine, or the administrators, the police chief or the fire chief, would get together and assess a series of fines? I wasn't...
The Board of Selectmen will be assessing those fines, and the administrator will be levying those fines.
Getting to the end, 1605, it mentions about a carbon dioxide permitting, which seems to be a new section, and I was just wondering, again, about the fee and what the, what the reason was for, for the section being added. It mentions a plan review fee, and I wasn't sure if the fire chief was going to set that, or if the Board of Selectmen was going to do that.
1605, what section, sir?
It's just, it's just that whole section, really. It does mention, it does mention a fee somewhere. I didn't take that down. It seemed to be a new section, so...
If the fire chief just happens to speak to it, please.
Sure.
Yeah. Yes. Steve?
Good evening. The answer to the question regarding the fee is, again, we'll be making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will set, as I understand it, all fees within the bylaw. This is a new section to the bylaw, and what this pertains to is liquid carbon dioxide systems that are mostly found in fast food restaurants or other types of chain restaurants. And the reason for this is, for those who are familiar with a carbon dioxide system, that's, you know, typically what the soda gun, if you think of a soda gun when they're pouring you a cup of soda. The carbon dioxide systems in some restaurants, they're just small bottles that run that CO2 system. Many fast food restaurants and chain restaurants are moving to a liquefied system where there's a large tank that's stored either on the first level, or if there's a basement, they're typically in the basement. And these tanks allow them to keep much more carbon dioxide on premises. These are filled from trucks that come to a restaurant filled from an outside connection. And the reality is, is that the amount of carbon dioxide that's in these tanks, if there is a leak in the tank, there is enough carbon dioxide in that tank to displace the oxygen in the entire building, which could be deadly. And there are cases around the country where they have been deadly. We do have some of these liquid carbon dioxide systems in the restaurants in town, so this bylaw would require those having this type of a system to register it with the fire rescue department and to ensure that it has the proper inspection and alarms for the patrons of the restaurant.
Thank you, Steve.
And I just have one more, Mr. Moderator, if somebody else doesn't have anything.
Okay.
It would be 701, Capitol Improvement Program, and the page is 12.
Page 12?
Page 12.
Page 12, okay.
In the Charter, Section 603, under Capitol Expenditure Program, it specifically states that the planning board is involved in that process. This language seems to have omitted them. It is, as I said, in the Charter, it does specify in the existing bylaw, it mentions a rationale for the planning board to be involved, which is that they review the CIP to make sure that it's not inconsistent with the master plan. I don't know if that's gone by the boards. I don't know as far as if the law has changed. Obviously, we wouldn't be here if, if something didn't need to be updated, so, but it is in the Charter currently.
I think Ed, Dan? Yes.
To the best of my knowledge, I've been here 20 years, the planning board has never reviewed any portion of the CIP, maybe because there was a lack of a master plan. Certainly, they would still have some input through the CIP process that would allow them to participate in that plan and make recommendations. So in no way are we shutting out the planning board, but what I can tell you is they have not been part of the process for a number of years.
I just want to make sure that it's...
Excuse me, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a follow up, and I don't know if this answers Mr. Coppington's question. In 703.2, we do say the finance committee shall review proposed CIP and shall prepare and submit the CIP to the annual town meeting pursuant to Section 603 of the Town Charter.
Right, but it doesn't mention the planning board, right?
It doesn't mention it here.
Correct. It is in the Charter.
Correct, but I think this reference was intended to carry forth that provision of the Charter into, into here without specifically having to mention.
Could we change that? I mean, when I was on the planning board, we did get them. At some point, they did stop. I don't think anybody, while I was serving, had any thoughts on the subject, but they certainly were included when I was on the planning board. And at some point, they did stop sending it along, and I don't think anybody made a fuss about it, but if we're going to follow the Charter, it should be specific so that everybody listed in the Charter is, is given their due place in the new administrative bylaws.
Well, certainly nothing here would, would contravene what's in the Charter, so do you want to have it repeated here? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I think you should have, you shouldn't have this confusing disconnect between the Charter. People aren't typically going to look at the Charter, to be honest with you. If I wasn't looking at this right now, it wouldn't have occurred to me to even ask the question, but because you guys spent an awful lot of time, I think we should have it complete, or as complete as we can make it, and include, you know, the town did vote for a new Charter, and they kept that provision in. So for me, I would like to see it in there.
Okay. Anything, okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing on my question now would be, does the Board of Selectmen wish to take any action this evening?
I move that the Board of Selectmen support the presentation of the bylaw committee of its revised bylaws of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, to town meeting for its review and consideration at the special town meeting on March 24th, 2015.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
I would ask we delay it, just so that we can look at the final draft? Well, that should be ready before the next meeting, correct?
Through the chair, the final draft will be ready on Tuesday. The warrant closes on Monday. The Board of Selectmen would not have a scheduled meeting prior to the warrant being mailed to the town meeting members. So the select board would have to take a vote either this evening or Monday evening. And this final document would not be ready, and the plan right now is to get it ready Tuesday. We've got a few things to add to it.
I'll second it for the discussion purposes.
Ma'am Chairman, Mr. Moderator, the other point is that when this goes to town meeting, it's still an amendable document.
I was going to say, yes.
So if there was something that you suggested that we didn't put in, and you, you know, we wanted it included, no, but I'm just using that as an example. It's still an amendable document.
Agreed.
I think from a timing point of view, you might not have enough time to see it before it has to go to the printer, which is next Tuesday.
And I, and I believe, through the chair, I believe the motion is the presentation of the bylaw committee, so that entails of what we have tonight and not what's going to be at town meeting.
The final product.
The final product, right. So it'll be just tonight's presentation, so that we can move it along to the town meeting.
It is just a recommendation.
Yes.
To town meeting, which we have held until that night, making recommendations. So I don't think the Board of Selectmen recommending it tonight is, is an urgency. I certainly don't have a problem listening to arguments why tonight is, is the drop-dead night that we have to do it. But for me, it's a recommendation of this board to town meeting, which we can make at any time up to the town meeting.
So we have a motion and a second, so if the motion fails, then we can take it up at, because we would need three votes tonight to, you know, pass the motion. So if you don't want to pass the motion, then the motion will fail.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable until I see the final document.
Okay, so it's, it's, you say yes?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion fails.
Okay, any, that's, no other board is able tonight to take, well, it would be the finance committee. We know the bylaw committee thinks that it's a great, and it is a great task that you've accomplished, so... That being said, if there is nothing more to say, then I think yes.
The bylaw committee does have a motion.
Who, who has? Oh, you do, good. Oh, fine.
We'd like to make a motion to move to that the committee approve the bylaws of the Town of Auburn dated February 20th, 2015, as amended and subject to any further minor clerical or language amendments, to submit said document to the town meeting for its review and consideration at the special town meeting on March 24th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? You being known, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? I think then we can dissolve this meeting this evening, folks. Unless you all want to stay here.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Selectmen are adjourned.
Okay, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.
The finance committee and I will just dissolve.
Dissolve.
Kevin? Yes.
And...